Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one liberty, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a moment of silence, please, if you'd stand. This past week, we lost a community member, Lois Deal. She was the wife and mother of two of our former mayors and a longtime teacher at St. Mary's. So if we could have a few moments of silence, please. Thank you. And before roll call, I'd like to introduce our assistant clerk here, Kathleen Martin. She's with us tonight, so be kind.
Yes.
Speak loud, give your names and address when you speak, so she can get it.
Yes, please.
First time.
Okay.
So roll call.
Blash?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Riker?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. And tonight, we have a presentation by former school board member Greg Murray regarding an intergovernmental collaboration at Head Start. So Greg, if you'd come forth.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to address you here tonight. I do want to say, before I begin, that I do not represent Maccone County, nor do I represent the Mount Clemens Community School District. That having been said, I'd like to give each of you one of these. And who may I?
You start right down there. Thank you.
How are you?
Great, how's John?
Thanks, Greg.
Here, saving.
What you have before you is the 2014 Maccone County Community Needs Assessment. I'd like to ask you to turn to the page where the paper is inserted. I believe that's page 58 and 59. And if you'll allow me, I'll go through the cheat sheet, which I prepared, which would enlighten you with respect to the conversation that's going on right now between the Mount Clemens Community School District and Maccone County Head Start Program. And I'll start with my bullet points. There are some undisputed facts. Residents of Mount Clemens passed a $70 million-plus capital improvement bond initiative for the schools. Two schools were demolished, and improvements were made on other district-owned facilities. Seminole and Martin Luther King Schools were rebuilt with state-of-the-art upgrades. Declining revenue forced the closing of MLK and Washington Elementary Schools. Mount Clemens Community Schools is paying tens of thousands of dollars, $42,000 roughly, to secure empty district schools. Overall, district enrollment has been on the decline for at least the last four years. This Community Needs Assessment, which I shared with you, confirms the existence of more than 300 Mount Clemens children, who are age and income eligible to receive Head Start services. And as you all know, Head Start is paid for by the federal government. It is not paid for by the school district. The county provides something called MATCH. MATCH can be services provided by collaborating entities. So it doesn't necessarily require a cash match, but roughly about 95% of the federal government pays, including salaries, benefits, services, rent, and things of that nature, utilities, and things of that nature. Prior to the sequester, Mount Clemens Community Schools fielded several Head Start classrooms, but they currently only have one Head Start classroom with 17 students. Head Start is provided nearby by Morning Star, but they're limited, space limited, to about 40 students. And I'm sure that Mount Clemens and the county seeks to get the best return of federal dollars back into the city and back into the county. And as I indicated before, the federal government pays for a majority of all Head Start expenses, including facilities and rent. And Maccone County is the grantee for county-based Head Start services. And Maccone County prepares and submits Head Start grant applications for the county on a biannual basis, or sometimes on a yearly basis, as well. The conversations that we've been having now speak to the vision. Maccone County has indicated a willingness to consider adding additional Head Start slots, minimum of 85 or so, and citing those Head Start classes at Martin Luther King. That does a number of different things. Number one, it provides services to our city's babies. Head Start services range from zero to five, from birth to two and a half, early Head Start, and then regular Head Start from three to five. And so, the discussion has been, as recently as last Wednesday, can this be done, how can it be done, and when can it be done? The county has indicated that they will look at the possibility of putting these Head Start slots in the budget to be submitted to the federal government, Health and Human Services, this July. If that happens, and the money is approved, a number of things will occur simultaneously. In addition to servicing the babies in our community, in Mount Clemens, it will also provide dedicated services to the families of those children, because as you know, family service workers work with each child and each family to help them on their path to self-sufficiency. Secondly, it would provide for an educational use of a building that the taxpayers paid $27 million for, a building which is now mothballed and being used as a storage facility for district surplus equipment and furniture. Thirdly, it will provide for the district revenue with respect to rent that the district can then use to help offset their deficit reduction plan, which is monitored by the state. The fourth thing that it will do is it will provide an opportunity for the school district to develop a feeder system into the elementary school through the graduates of the Head Start program, which might lead to additional stability for the elementary system inside of the Mount Clemens School District. And it will result in a return, a more aggressive return of dollars that we send to Washington, DC, back into the county, and back into the district, and back into Mount Clemens. So, the purpose of my presentation to you is to give you a heads-up that this conversation is being had, and being had rather robustly. I would think that within the next 30 days or so, a decision will be made with respect to whether or not those 85 slots or more can be included in the upcoming budget submission on the part of the county. The reason why this was termed "intergovernmental" is because what we have now is a unique opportunity to work, county, with the county, with the school district, and with yourselves, to bring an important new element, which is enhanced Head Start services, into Mount Clemens. I think that Mount Clemens has an excellent elementary school system and process, and if we can enhance that, and also provide additional students for enrollment, recruitment and enrollment, in the elementary school system, we can perhaps change, to some extent, that decline in enrollment that we all know we're experiencing right now. So, I'm here to share that information with you, ask you to put that on your radar, and then ask you to consider working collaboratively with the county and with the school district to promote that as a plus for the city. You know, you judge a nation by what they do for their seniors, their veterans, and their babies. I think that this is a unique opportunity, given the fact that those kids have already been identified as both age and income eligible and residing here. I think it's an excellent opportunity to begin the kind of collaboration that hopefully will lead perhaps to other things. But the most important thing is, there's a vehicle in place that we can tap into without cost to the city or to the school district to help serve our most needy Mount Clemens residents. And so, with that, I'll shut up. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Blash?
Yes, Mr. Blash. I don't, I don't see any downside to this. And I think whatever the city can do, and that was, the thought that was going through my mind is, all right, I understand what the concept is and what it is that you want us to accomplish. What's, what can we do to help? And if it's to promote, you know, whatever, whatever we need to do to promote that, that's, that's the task that we should take on. And I agree with that. And I, and I think this is a, this is a great idea. And, and like I said, I don't see any downside to it.
It's kind of hard to find a flaw, because it's a perfect convergence of need and facility. Now, if you look on page 58, if you look at that chart, you're going to see that there are places like Sterling Heights and Warren that have an even larger number of kids who are both age and income eligible. However, they do not have a vacant, state-of-the-art, already-licensed school into which to put additional programming. There are some communities that don't have Head Start and don't want Head Start in their communities, because, for a number of reasons. But we have a perfect opportunity here to enhance the community, and you as ambassadors, you as representatives of this city can have an impact on promoting this, helping with recruitment. There are a number of different things that this body can do to help that effort. And so, I came here today to share this with you and to ask you to consider, if a work group is going to be formed, and it will be, that perhaps one or two of you, through the mayor, be assigned to participate in that work group to make this happen. And so, I thank you very much for your comment.
It looks like one way for us to, to get a return on our $70 million investment.
Yes, why not use it? You know, why not generate some income off of it, which you couldn't do if you just had an elementary school there? There'd be no, you'd get, what, $6,000, $7,000, the state is always reeling back. But Head Start allows for a comparable per-student stipend. And so, the district could use a building, generate a low revenue, create a lot of goodwill, and create a feeder system into the district.
Commissioner Rager?
What is your timeline, as far as, you and I have spoke about this before, and is a resolution from this body sufficient? And if so, when would you need that by?
The conversation has gotten to the point where if there's an expression of support, it could be in a form of a resolution, it could be in a form of commitment by the mayor, the commission through the mayor. It wouldn't necessarily have to be a resolution, but that always helps. And I would think that such a resolution might be, if it is your will to do so, be most timely if it were done by the end of April. And conversations are going on with county commissioners. I've spoken with Fred Miller. He is wholeheartedly on board with the project and has pledged his support, because, as you may know, once they complete the budget for Head Start, it has to go through the Health and Human Services Committee, which is headed up by Andrew Doozy. And I've gotten indications that there'll be no issues. It's not distributive conflict, it's not territorial conflict. There are a lot of things that are absent in this proposal that would otherwise derail it. And so, yeah.
Have you had any communication at the federal level?
Actually, yes. I've been in contact with Deputy Stavino's office, Sandra Levin's office, and making enroads with Gary Peters' office, because once the application gets there, it would be great if we could have our Michigan delegation supporting it as well. And that's a little ways down the road, but that is on the radar, yes.
Greg, have you spoken to the school?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the superintendent, her special education director, and the finance director, attended a meeting last Wednesday, March 11th, where we spent almost three and a half hours fleshing out how this would come about, what it would look like, what the next steps would be with respect to budget development. The school has to do some things in order to prepare the school for that. Right now, they have a lot of furniture in there, they have a lot of equipment in there, all of that would have to be gone. The school district committed to doing whatever they needed to do, through the superintendent, through Deb Wallstrom, doing whatever they need to do to make sure that if it's in the budget, it's going to be submitted this year, that the school will be ready. Yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Rager?
I see Mr. Shiktel, former school board member, back there as well.
Yes.
Mr. Shiktel, do you have anything else that could add a substance to this commentary?
I think Mr. Murray's covered it very well. This initiative started when I was still on the school board, and it kind of died after a presentation of the county, so it's nice to see that it's back up and running and will benefit the younger kids in our city and make them more educated as they go off the line, so that they can become productive citizens in Mount Clemens and hopefully stay here and be productive taxpayers also.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Mensah?
I think it's a win-win. You've got my support.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
To my colleagues on that issue, when would we want to do some type of resolution?
We can talk about that after.
We can talk about it right now, too.
This is a presentation right now, so I think it's something that we can bring up at a future meeting.
When did you, when did you need it by?
By the end of April.
I would say the end of April.
Okay, so our second weekend, second meeting in April.
Couple meetings.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have any other announcements or, of meetings? Did Lisa leave you anything with meetings or anything? No? Okay. Commissioner Mensah?
I see Detective Lieutenant Dan Mensah back there, retired, and my mom.
Okay.
Nice to see you here.
Alrighty, adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I need to amend the agenda, remove from the consent agenda 10A and make it 9F, and then move to approve as amended.
Support.
Commissioner Mensah?
I would like to remove 10C and make it, what is it, 9G?
Is that fine with the maker and the second?
Sorry.
Okay. Roll call. Dempsey? Yes. Hill?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Blash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay. Public participation, this is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to the three-minute rule.
Danielle Tierkoff, 54, Dorothy Avenue, or Dorothy Street, whatever, is, street's been awful dirty for the longest of time, and I was just kind of wondering how soon the street cleaner is going to come, or how often they come around. Other people have been complaining about that, too. Mud, dirt, leaves. In front of my neighbor at 47 Dorothy, catty corner across from me, the water is still there, that hasn't even been cleaned up. Where in some areas, it's just disappeared. So, I was just kind of wondering when it'll be cleaned up, because I realized in the wintertime there was a lot of busyness with the snow plow and cleaning the snow. And now, since it's melted, and we have nicer, warmer weather, which all who I talked to, except for people maybe who like to ski or snowmobile, they're very pleased with it. And another thing I'd like to mention is, over on North Mountain Grashit, across from Ruleys, there, I think it's called Quality Fuel now, I know it used to be a marathon. There has been a complaint from somebody who was a customer there, who no longer wants to go there too often, that they need, they feel that they need security. I don't know if there's been an incidence with stealing there, or if somebody's been bothering someone or other people, or trying to extort money from them. First long time ago, there was a problem there, now it seems to be minimized, that I know of. It was, I heard that there was problems with, it was in the paper, so I'll mention it anyway, maybe it was a few years back, with prostitution. Now, I heard that's been kind of, the problem with that's been kind of minimized. But, somebody shouldn't have to wait a place they normally go to to get gas, or just buy a few things, because somebody's threatening him for money, and they said they were followed out, the guy said he was followed out to the car. He normally can't be at these meetings, because he works flexible hours, but he's a resident of Mount Clemens. And, as I mentioned to him, that I, every now and then, attend the city commission meetings, and I told him about the public participation time. He told me not to forget to mention it, and I just thought it was a worthy thing to bring up. And, is another thing, I think I mentioned it, or talked about it back during the fall, is a lot about the sidewalks deal. One on Elizabeth has just been so messed up.
Yeah, remember. Okay, thank you.
How do you know the order?
It doesn't matter, just first, first one gets to the mic.
I'd like somebody to get up there.
Good evening. My name is Tom Addis, I live at 1330 Kingsley. I have been a resident of Mount Clemens all my life, my parents were, and my grandparents for most of their life lived at Mount Clemens. And I guess I'm here to tell you goodbye, because I feel I have to leave. And I have to leave because I have a couple of neighbors who have what you describe in your ordinance as, as a rhythmic-based component of their sound amplification. The one gentleman, and, but, these are not bad people, don't get me wrong, they're relatively nice people, but, the gentleman who lives right across the street from me, I can hear him coming a block away. And when he comes to us, he may sit there for less than a minute, two minutes, three minutes, and no matter, even though all my windows are shut, all my doors are shut, I'm going to hear that thump, thump, thump. Sometimes the, the actual pictures on my walls vibrate. Now, I just noticed that Ford's house is down from me this Saturday, a young man has added one to his car, and he and his dad were out there for two hours, trying to get it, I guess, well, I don't know how they tell what perfect is, maybe if a glass breaks, maybe. But, the point is, I can't live like this. Now, I've talked to the gentleman, if I went across the street and I said, "You're turning it down," he probably would, I'd still hear it inside my house. And, and again, if you wanted to call the police, they're, he's there three minutes, and nobody's there. You guys mentioned something in here about, you know, 30 minutes from the time of inception, when they start the noise, I'm not quite sure exactly how that all applies. But the point is, I can't live like this. And so, after all these years, I have, you know, contacted a Realtor, I'm going to move. Not, and I don't think that's going to end Mount Clemens, because I'm leaving. But, you know, I've loved living here, I've bragged about living in Mount Clemens, I have neighborhood, I've bragged about Summell Hills. I went to school in Summell Hills. Just can't do it. And I don't know if there's anything you guys can do, because let's face it, that, those kinds of systems have one purpose, to be as loud as they possibly can be. And again, I'm going to be gone, but maybe you guys can figure out something. You probably can't ban them permanently. Maybe you can't even sit there and say, "Look, once you're into the residential area, you got to turn it off. You want to go down Grashit like that, go ahead." But, it literally drives me crazy to hear that stuff. And like I said, there's no place in my house to hide, I can't hide from it. Even if I turn on the fans or music, it's still there. So, anyway, I wish you well.
Thank you for the warning, because I know exactly, it's next to my house where they just put it in, in the car, so.
And you know.
Thanks for the warning.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Laura Fournier, 70, Ludwig. I'm really sorry to hear that this gentleman is going, and it just highlights the importance of our neighborhoods. And the more people we lose in these neighborhoods, good people like that, the more this city will struggle, and the downtown will continue to be empty. I would like an update on the sidewalks. I took a very wet spill the other day on Ross, combination of someone not clearing their sidewalk and bad sidewalks. And, so I would like an update on that. The other thing I would like to bring up is the old Roth and Deng store on Cass Avenue. First of all, the snow was never cleared around that whole corner the entire winter. I don't know how anybody could miss it, if you go down Cass. So then, people, you know, trampled a path through, so now the path is on the grass, and, but anyway. They put up a snow fence, but I know that the ordinance is a six-foot cyclone fence, similar to what they had at SVS Vision, when they were doing that construction and demo. Yesterday, I believe it was, I saw kids out there climbing up the piles of rubble. It, it's a disaster waiting to happen. The whole orange snow fence is down. I know of an excellent, absolutely excellent demo company that will be glad to clear the mess out, and I heard there were some permit issues with some of the previous license, licensing problems with some of the previous companies that were employed. These people have no problem getting it. They could also clean up this gentleman's lot on, it's Walnut. But I would be glad to give you their names and their number, and they are great. But I think we better do something on Cass before we have a huge problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Excuse me. Good evening, Andy Kemp, 14 Woolworth Court. Last meeting, I was here to highlight some activities with the Kendrick Area Neighborhood Watch Group, and I'm here again for that purpose. Before I get started, I'd like to thank Commissioners Mensah and Raker for coming out to our meeting, that's always good to see, it validates our group. Anyone else who is welcome, or who wishes to attend, you all are welcome to do so at any one of our upcoming meetings. What I wanted to highlight today was our Grashit cleanup. We are coming into year two of our project to clean up a section of Grashit. We are targeting, we have three cleanup times coming up this year. The first will be in April. It is between the dates of April 11th and April 19th. It will probably be the 11th with a rain date of the 18th, but I will be back at your next meeting, just to let you know exactly when that will be. So please mark that on your calendar, and if you're able to assist, we would love to see you there. Obviously, the more people we have, the less work we all have to do, so. Obviously, the more people we have, the less work we all have to do, so, thank you much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
This is back further to the, hi everyone, Dave Schnur, 80, Maross. I kind of got indication that we're finally going to come up with some rationalization for what's been going on with this South Highland property, and I'm a very practical person, certainly become that way living here, and that I really have no illusions that we're, you know, someone's going to grow a conscience and, you know, do something ethical on this thing, so I pretty much, if I was a betting man, I could probably make some money on this. But, pretty much what I want to say is that, I don't think we got, you know, I kind of know where this is going to go, so I'm going to just anticipate, you know, based on that prediction. Just like I am concerned, like a lot of residents should be concerned about our financial matters, I think we're, no matter what we do as an administration, we're heading for an emergency manager, I think that's, that's a reality. And I think this issue is similar in that vein, in that I think we really need to get something from the outside to look at this, maybe the Attorney General, or something like that, because, you know, when we see this pattern of this little protected environment, that's, that's really bad, and I think we, you've proven you can't be objective about it, and that's what I have to rely on. You know, I am a, you know, sensible person, but I can't see where you can rationalize this thing, that property sitting there, beyond reproach for over 20 years. So that's what's making me so curious through this process, that you've certainly taken your time to come up with a strategy, and we're going to hear that, I guess, tonight. And, the way I see it, I think what's probably the good side of it, you're going to set a precedent for those people that are being persecuted out of town. And I'm, I'm going to use that precedent, and I think other people would be, I would encourage them to use it, that when you, when you do officially rationalize this, then it will be difficult from now on to enforce these ordinances. That's really true. So, I think this is a good pivot point, though, that, having said that, that we're, you know, we're going to officially make a point that it is appropriate to leave a property sit there for over 20 years, with no paint on one side of it, now a tarp on the back of it, got another property that's got scaffolding set up, probably be there for another 20 years. That's a good precedent, I think we can use that, it's good to just kind of relax these ordinances. Thank you.
Name is William Ford, I live at 83 Gibbs Street in Mount Clemens. I would like to know who's responsible for the streetlights. We have several streetlights that are out, and nobody seems to care. When you call DTE, they say anywhere from two weeks to 30 days. Thank you.
Mike Schickell, 875, North Espen, Mount Clemens, Michigan. On my walk today around the neighborhood, I found that the advisor trash mail that's being dumped into our driveways is still there, and I would hope that maybe we have an ordinance or something that can make that paper more responsible in terms of delivering it, since they choose not to deliver it by the US Mail like the Journal does. On a positive note, I'd like to thank you for your support and encouragement for this Head Start program. It's going to be beneficial to Mount Clemens, and especially beneficial to our younger children who need that, that Head Start, in terms of getting things in order before they start school, so that they can succeed. On a positive note also, I'd like to say on behalf of the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families, we have a Dialogue Day, and I'm sure Roger made you aware of that, that it was going on, but I'd like to thank Roger, and Mayor Dempsey, and Lois Hill for their participation in that. It was the first one put on by the Coalition, and I am sure it'll be one of many that are going to happen in the future. Also, I'm a member of the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, and we recently had our oratorical contest at the high school. And Mayor Dempsey and Lois Hill were able to judge for us, and a last-minute notice, so I guess I owe them one now. And also, Joe Raker and Denise Menzer, being members of the Mount Clemens Optimists, supported that activity. So, I just wanted to let you know, there are some good things going on, and whenever we come out with something, if you can make it, please do.
Thank you.
George Gemmer, 132 High Street. I had lunch today in town, and passing through town, I was approaching the Macomb Daily Building. There was a great big Certa sleeper semi out in front. I'm looking at this building with broken windows, and open windows, and boarded-up windows, and a Certa sleeper semi out front, where the gentleman was carrying in the look like queen or king-sized mattresses. I'm confused, maybe you can help me out, and like me, what's going on? I noticed Roger Button isn't here today, and he seems to be kind of up on that. I'm confused.
So, so am I. We'll look into it, thank you.
I'm sorry, Laura Fournier, 70, Ludwig, I didn't use my whole three minutes, but in walking back from the city building today, because I walked up here a couple times, the mattresses are all just inside the doorway.
They are.
I did notice them.
Okay. Apparently, they're already on it. Brian Tingley is right on top of it.
Hi, Dolores Kaciniak, 250, Euclid. Well, I guess the snow melted away, and everyone felt giving their complaints, because they can see things going on. I'm the block captain for Euclid, and I listen to my neighbors, and I have a neighbor that's been complaining about the building next door to him, I'm not going to pinpoint the address on cable TV, but if you want it after, I'll give it to you. It's at North Avenue in Euclid. He says today, or yesterday, 35 people were dropped off there. Now, I don't know if this is a daycare center, or what it is, but it's owned by a building construction company, who I tried to call three times. They have a recorder, they don't answer the messages at all. I want to ask them if they could move these people to the front of the building, to face North Avenue, so when they smoke, it doesn't come to the gentleman's backyard or in his house. Now, I lost my sense of smell, but when I got out of the car today, I smelled it right away. So can you imagine, your neighbor next door, you have 35 people out there smoking every day, all day, and that's all they do? The thing is, what is he using this place for? Is it a daycare? Is it a senior retirement center? We don't know what it is, but all I know, it's a home construction building company. Is he licensed for this? I'm asking all these questions to get, and maybe we can find the answer. Is he getting money from the state to take care of these people? And if he is, if the state is paying some money, we're not allowed to smoke in a building that the state owns or on the property, and he, they're on the property smoking. And getting back to the smoking, what do cigarettes cost? I don't know, like I told Mr. Bash, the last time I bought a pack of cigarettes was for my father, how many years ago, it was 19 cents a package, and I guess, what, they're $40 a carton now? So where are these people getting the money from? From our state money? I know if you're on social services, you can't, you're drug tested, and for alcohol, they should test these people for smoking. But they have 35 or 40 people every day smoking next door to you. He says, "In my house, I can't get rid of the," and this man's been complaining for a year. Mr. Raker knows about this, I think Denise knows about it, they heard from my Neighborhood Watch meeting. This old man, I, this man, I told him tonight to come, and he says, "I'm tired of coming there, because they don't listen to me." But, I'm feeling, I'm the block captain, and I feel responsible to help him out, and I've called different places, and I'm just back at square one. And I am really getting tired of hearing that. He walks past my house, and when the weather is nice, with his dog, I'm afraid to ask him how he's doing, because that's all I hear about is his smoke. And, off the record, I'm tired of hearing this, but I know how he's feeling, but I'm tired from him, that he has to live with this. So if the state is subsidizing this landlord to take care of these people, are we paying for all those cigarettes that they're smoking out there? Shouldn't it be a training school, that they should be in a class or something? Why are they sitting outside smoking all day? Are we paying for this? We are paying for this. That's my tax money, that's your tax money. I have to live on a very limited income of my social security. And, my three minutes up?
Yep. And we'll look into it.
I get on this, I can't stop.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised at the previous meeting.
First item, coordination of purchases. Commissioner Menzer specifically requested information regarding a proposed city ordinance, or city purchase of computers, and whether we could coordinate our purchase with the county. City administration has followed up on this, and we're planning on bringing back the proposed purchase with additional information, most likely at the March 6th meeting. It's my, also, I stated it was my intent to follow up with the county on this in a more general, broad fashion, as well as following up with MACRO, the Macomb Area Communities for Regional Opportunities. I did have the opportunity to talk directly with folks at MACRO about that, and the work that they've done in that regard. There was some discussion of coordinating amongst Department of Public Services Directors. I'm going to follow up with Jeff Wood to see if anything's come out of that, in our experience here at the city. Vis a vis the general inquiry with the county, I did talk with Marilyn Delugie, our finance director, and a person that handles that IT purchase, and she did indicate that there's a list of things that we work with the county on, office supplies, vehicles on occasion, if there's a confluence between what they're ordering and what we need, and a variety of other items. I kind of got that late today, so it wasn't in the, in the report this evening, but we'll check into that further, and get back to you with more information on that computer purchase for the next meeting. Secondly, 15 South Highland was mentioned earlier, this property was reviewed, and there are no planned or outstanding enforcement actions. So for example, regarding the Vis Queen, it was mentioned, that's not an issue, and we're not pursuing a violation on that. So, that's the current status on that property. 40 Eldridge, a resident inquired about the status of this property, and it was vis a vis about whether it was going to become a rental property. The property is going through the certificate of occupancy process in order to become a rental property, is the current status. As a reminder, the city did adopt a residential rental restriction, overlay district ordinance in October of 2014. Under that ordinance, residents can pursue establishing districts that could prevent approval of additional rental properties in such a district, once they're established. So that's a possible way for people that are concerned about a proliferation of rental properties in their neighborhood to pursue action. If you're looking for more information on that, feel free to call City Hall and talk with Community Development about that. Brian Tingley is going to be our resident expert on that, more than likely. Number four, securing protecting vacant homes. Residents expressed concerns about scrapping activity in Mount Clemens, specifically as it related to vacant homes on welts. We've had a conversation with Sergeant McFadden, and we're looking at ways we can try to take action on curbing that kind of illegal scrapping activity that might be taking place in our community. That's going to involve coordination with the Sheriff's Department, and working out a way to try to address those things. So we'll be in touch in the future to talk about how to handle that, in a way that hopefully will improve our experience with that, catching people that are doing that kind of activity. Number five, sidewalk program. The city did conduct a work session of the mayor and commission on March 2nd regarding the prospect of expanding efforts related to sidewalk maintenance. The next step is for city administration to bring back a few possible approaches with more specific detail for consideration by the mayor and commission. That'll like, that will happen in April, when we put together a couple different things to look at, and for us to evaluate. And then I had one more item that I was going to add, as an after-the-fact addition. Commissioner Lois Hill had contacted me today about something that I had heard of from, from another source once, and we've had a couple of questions on it now, so I thought I would cover a little bit of information at tonight's meeting on this. And that is regarding the installation of new water meters in the city of Mount Clemens. We have a company, S L C Water Meters, that are coming in to install new water meters in the city. When they're going to be in your neighborhood, a mailing should go out ahead of time that identifies the company, references the fact that representatives of that company will come to your home to establish an appointment and/or install a new meter in your home for monitoring your water usage. And they will carry ID identifying themselves as an employee of that company, S L C Meter, and they will also have a city-issued contractor ID as well, identifying them as an appropriate and official representative of the city in that capacity. As I said, you should get a letter ahead of time that indicates that they're going to be in your neighborhood, taking that kind of activity. And on that letter, it states, if you have a question, you can contact the city about it, and I'll provide that telephone number for anybody that might be in that kind of a situation. Of course, it's 586-469-6889, extension 502. So if you do have somebody in your neighborhood, and you're concerned about whether they're an appropriate representative of the city in the regard of knocking on your door, asking for permission to do this water meter installation, you can contact us at that number to verify that that's appropriate, and they're officially representing the city on that. If you have any other questions on it, feel free to call City Hall and contact the city manager's office, and we can provide additional detail if need be, but that's the general way that things will be handled, and that's the way it should happen in your neighborhood. So that's all I had under administrative responses for this week.
Commissioner Menzer. The county's purchasing director is Polly Hauser, who is also a resident of the city, who watched the last city commission meeting and contacted me. They have contacted their H P representative, and they're more than happy to piggyback our purchase on, to the county purchases. As I showed last week, there's a vast difference between the price that High Tech was offering, and between what the county is paying, and the models that the county is purchasing are three versions newer, for over $300 less, so, just contact Polly, she's waiting to hear from somebody.
Commissioner Bash?
The letter that is being sent out to the residents with regards to the water meter installation, have you seen a copy of that letter?
I was, I did not get a copy of it today, I was trying to get ahold of it, but I don't have it as of right now.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing it myself.
I can provide a copy.
Well, and the reason I say so is because they did change the, no, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of the Edison. No, that's okay, never mind.
Take back.
Take it back, take it back.
Company's been consistent for the last couple of years on this project, so.
No, we're good.
We'll provide a copy for Mayor.
It's the Edison thing that I'll address later.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meeting.
I'll move.
Second. Roll call. Hill?
Yes.
Menzer?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, General Business, 9A, request approval of agreement with A K T Peerless for environmental consulting services. Need a motion?
Move to approve Dickinson Wright P L L C retaining of A K T Peerless to provide professional consulting services on the city's behalf for calendar year 2015 pursuant to the attached Environmental Services Agreement.
Support.
A K T Peerless Environmental and Energy Services has provided environmental consulting services for several years to Dickinson Wright P L L C, the city's environmental attorneys, regarding the methane activity at the former Mount Clemens landfill site, continuing methane monitoring and reporting to the EPA and the Department of Environmental Quality, as well as fine-tuning the operation of the active methane venting system are critical stages of the project that make A K T Peerless's continued professional consulting services necessary. Dickinson Wright has further advised that no competitive advantage would occur to the city if these professional services were submitted for requests for proposals, and in fact, the project would suffer significantly if new environmental consulting services were engaged at this time. Therefore, please find the attached Environmental Services Agreement for calendar year 2015 with A K T Peerless Environmental and Energy Services.
Questions, comments? Sitting down, roll call, please. Menzer?
Oh, I'm, hold on. Put your hand up, sorry. Yeah, I, you know what, I just have a question about the timing of this. The letter from Dickinson Wright is dated March 3rd, the letter from Peerless is dated December 4th, and the contra, and the thing from A K T Peerless says that those prices are only good for 30 days. Is that?
We were actually in negotiations with the D E Q to lower some of the reporting requirements, and that's what they'll hold up in getting this to the commission for approval. A K T Peerless is committed to that pricing. I was hoping that we could change our requirements, thus bring to you in March a lower price would. I haven't gotten that yet from the D E Q.
And, and I wondered, how many more years are we going to be stuck with this sampling? I know that there's been reduced sampling.
Yes, it's, it's hard to say. Probably until there's no methane to report, and there's, it's, we've been reporting zeros for some time, would be my guess. I don't know that. This could go on for many years.
Okay, I'm good.
Roll call. Menzer?
Yes.
Riker? Your roll, your roll call.
Yes.
Thank you. Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Okay, 9B, request city commission approval of the contract extension for the residential refuse collection services. Need a motion?
I move to extend the residential refuse collection contract for an additional three years, effective June 6th, 2015, through June 5th, 2018, to Rizzo Environmental Services Incorporated, D B A Rizzo Services Incorporated, in the amount of 1,400, I'm sorry, $1,401,167.4 and 4 cents. $467,055.68 per year, for residential curbside pickup, street litter containers, bulk item pickup, yard waste pickup, disposal included on yard waste, and curbside recycling, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the extension agreement.
Do I have a second?
Support.
The city currently contracts with Rizzo Environmental Services, doing business as Rizzo Services, referred to as RES from here on out, for residential refuse collection services for residential units including bulk item pickup, yard waste, and curbside recycling. We also contract with them for pickup of street litter containers. RES has proposed maintaining their current bid pricing for an additional three years pending city commission approval of a three-year contract extension. Tabulations that have been received in 2006 for contract years 2006, '07, '08, '09 are provided for your review. City administration is recommending that the current contract with RES for these items, which have already been mentioned, be extended for an additional three years, and additional information is attached to this agenda item. If anybody would like me to go over it, I'd be happy to discuss that or call on Jeff Wood as the case may be required to talk about any of the information provided in the packet.
Questions? Commissioner Manser?
We have heard from residents repeatedly about trash bags versus cans. I'd like to see a bid that includes cans, and I don't believe this does. I'd like to see residents put their trash in cans at the curb so we don't have all these bags laying all over the streets.
I too have heard that on several occasions. I also think that three years ago, I advocated this going out for bid, but since then, there has been some demand for a change in the scope of services that is provided by our refuse hauler, so I think it would be advisable that we listen to our constituents and request proposals. There are multiple service providers out there, and granted, I mean, we may take the risk of having to pay more, maybe, but nothing against Rizzo. They're a for-profit company. Obviously, this is a fairly lucrative contract if they're going to extend it for three years without changing anything. So, I think that we need to focus on servicing the wants and needs of our citizens and come up with some type of scope of services change that will address what we've been hearing about for the last few years.
Anyone else?
Has Rizzo ever said anything about cans?
Jeff, do you want to answer?
Because I put my garbage out and I spray ammonia on it, and the squirrels still get into it.
The current contract does not allow for us to use cans, that's correct. It was bid back in 2006. The way that it was bid was to keep the cost down and not allow cans.
So, how much would it increase if we had cans?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that's a valid comment. In terms of any provision of cans like that is going to be at a cost basis which would have to be recovered either by the city or by the users. That is something that could be included in a bid, but it would be at a cost item that would be pretty substantial for the community. Don't know what the price would be.
I remember how much trouble we got into when we did the recycling, and that was an extra $10 for the recycling bin, and we got into a lot of trouble for that expense. Commissioner Riker?
To the city manager, you referenced in one of your memos here...
Yes.
Something about whether or not if we don't support, if we don't unanimously support this, can you...
That would be on the second item.
All right, pardon me, pardon me.
Because we did bid this contract out, and it's an extension.
Okay, no further... Do you have another question?
I would just like to know, is it $10 to have cans?
I don't know if the representative here tonight could answer that question or not. No?
I'd have to be back.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
I mean, is it like $10, $100?
All the ones which we want, they've got carts, they've got different kind of, you know, automated, you know, it gets more expensive, we go automate and stuff like that. Most of our cities are basically same as Mount Clemens, Clinton Township, most of them are basically the same kind of service. It's always some kind of a mess or something that happens, you know, but, you know, it just makes it neater, and the cans ain't blowing down the street. I mean, not sort of different things that you look at it that way.
Ray, could you...
You've got cans out there to be on the way and everything, so...
Could you just come to the mic?
Look at them, you know?
Excuse me.
You've got the bags, these way the streets are done. I'm sorry.
Just get to the mic so they can hear you on the...
Yeah, like I said, it, you know, if you had the cans that'd be blowing, who knows on the streets?
Can we have your name, please?
Now... Oh, I'm sorry, Ray Hernandez.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. Rizzo Services. So, I mean, we've got carts, we've got automated services, but it's a lot more money. You've got to... The carts cost $90, the big Kirby carts they do, that's all automated, a different truck that does that, it's all completely automated. I mean, certain cities are going to it. Like I said, Rizzo's going to it.
Rizzo's going to the carts?
They're going to the carts. They went to the carts.
And how much is that adding to each person?
I don't even know what... I mean, I can find out, I can get a price on it and stuff like that, but it is expensive. You've got to get a new truck, too. The truck's automated truck, and it's only one cart per customer, and it goes down the street, picks it up, and it goes right down the street, picks it up, and that's it. And, you know, like Clinton Township is bags like you guys, I mean, Frasier's about the same thing, bags. Most of the cities around here are like that. I mean, we can look into it. I mean, I can get a price and we can talk about it.
And most of the cities around here go by, they just have it in the bag?
Yeah, bags, yeah, basically. We can look around, I mean, I know you drive through Clinton and, you know, all these areas around.
Thank you.
Just in general, my colleagues, if he's going to look into it, then I think we should postpone a vote on this until we find out what this gentleman has to come back with, with the information he'll come back with. Or we just simply put it, request for proposals. I mean, there are... Three years ago when this came about, it was told by the then-city manager that you, like, Rizzo was the only one that could provide the service. And I went and did a little digging around, and I provided basically a 10-point paper for my colleagues as to the fact that there's Republic Environmental, a handful of other ones, and if we just keep on doing what we always did, we're never going to know, you know, the potential that's out there. I mean, granted, there is some risk, maybe you will. Have you ever thought about sweetening the deal and knocking a little bit off the top?
I mean, I look back 10 years when we first got this contract. Your price is cheaper now than it was 10 years ago. We've been keeping your prices down all the way for 10 years, this price's been really good price. I mean, we're just trying to, you know, help out, we help out whatever way we can. If there's problems or issues, I'm sure we can... I mean, I don't know, I don't know what you're looking for. I mean, the carts is expensive. It's an expensive cost to everybody. You either got to buy them, or your city's got to buy them, and what are you talking about, garbage cans, regular garbage cans that people want to put out?
There's all sorts of options out there. I've done enough research to know that it's...
Yeah, well, I mean, you want to get your expenses up, yeah, we can do a lot of things. It's going to cost a lot more money.
Or someone can do it cheaper.
You know?
You don't know?
If I can, real quick, clarify something that Mr. Hernandez mentioned. You mentioned that it was cheaper 10 years ago. I think that's accurate, but it wasn't when you were providing the service. It was when a prior bidder had that service before you got the bid.
Yes, yes, waste management.
And the point is that since that time, the rate has stayed the same, which is cheaper than it was under the prior provider of service that was 10 years ago and cost should have been less.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to clarify that. It wasn't your price that you're lower than, it was a competitor's price.
I think that from reading everything that was provided to us tonight, I think the city administration did an excellent job in researching this, and I said to be able to keep the cost for our residents down, I think is very important, and I think it's our responsibility to make sure that that does happen. And, you know, he looked around in the different neighborhoods that are all surrounding us, and you're providing that service at that cost, so I think it's our responsibility to make sure. I'm not willing to gamble that it's going to come back higher. I'm just not willing to do that. I don't think it's fiscally responsible for us. That's my two cents.
Commissioner Lo...
I just wanted to say that I was on the city commission, one waste management was collecting our trash, and I remember that at that time we did take bids and that Rizzo was the most reasonably priced of the people, and they've held the price at that amount all this time, so I'm in favor of keeping Rizzo myself.
And to say that our complaints are minimal from, I think Commissioner Manser had her hand up before you.
I'm very happy that you held the price for this long. I think that's wonderful, but I'm curious of a price per residence for garbage cans, not for the carts on wheels, for people to put their little, you know, 30, what is it, a 30-gallon can out. They do that in Clinton Township. They put their bags in the can and take the can to the curb, so I would like to see a price. We have until June 6. This contract doesn't need to be effective until then. I would like to see a price prior to signing.
Anyone else?
So, Clinton Township has cans that they put out?
Yeah, residential cans. Yes, they do.
She lives in Clinton Township.
My dad lives in Clinton Township. I lived next door to him for years.
Maybe certain.
They put cans out.
All right, let's call a roll.
I have one.
One more question? Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you collect in Clinton Township, too?
Yes, I live in Clinton Township. We do collect in Clinton Township. I live in a condo complex, and it's all bags.
I remember the pool with the recycle bins. My God, you would have thought the world was coming to an end.
Yeah, yeah. Got the recycle bins, they got a lot of different things.
Okay, no further questions, roll call, please. Riker?
No.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
No.
9B, request commission approval of a contract extension for residential refuge collection service... No, we just did that one. Sorry, we're going to see. Request commission approval to contract with Rizzo Environmental Service, Inc., Rizzo Service, Inc., for waste disposal services. I need a motion.
Motion to come up with a unanimous resolution by the city commission that the city administrator not obtain sealed bids for waste disposal services per the city administrator's recommendation, and to enter into an agreement with Rizzo Environmental Services Incorporated, DBA Rizzo Services Incorporated, for waste disposal services, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement as finalized by the city attorney.
Support.
The city's solid waste disposal agreement with Waste Management of Michigan expires on June 5, 2015. This agreement was entered into as a result of the city's exit from the Gross Points Clinton Refuse Disposal Authority. Our current solid waste collection service provider, RES, Rizzo Environmental Services, has offered to add disposal to our contractual partnership at a price of $16 per ton fixed over a three-year contract period. We're currently paying $24 per ton plus a state fee of .36 per ton to Waste Management of Michigan Incorporated, and that contract came about as a result of the exit from the Gross Points Clinton Refuse Disposal Authority. Pursuant to the city charter, sealed bids need not be obtained if the city administrator determines at no advantage the city would result from a competitive bid process. The qualifier is that it has to be a unanimous resolution when you're dealing with over a $1,500 procurement, and you haven't previously had a bid process as we did in the prior case. So, there's additional information provided to this agenda item that I can go into as requested by anybody on the commission. Otherwise, we're looking for approval by unanimous resolution of this contract to add disposal services to the current collection services provided by Rizzo Environmental.
Any questions? Commissioner Riker?
I would imagine we lost a little bit of leverage by the passage of the previous contract.
In terms of...
Their ability to provide services, do both?
We could have bid it together, and I've heard conflicting reports about whether that's advantageous or has worked out to be advantageous, given the potential, you know, the city administration's position that we were in better shape to do an extension on that initial contract. We can continue to proceed with a bid on this, and we will if we have less than a unanimous resolution. So, it's... I don't think that we're going to have much of an impact in terms of what we're going to get as pricing, based on what I can see from the market, which, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, it's just based on prior experience in other communities.
Commissioner Manser?
I just wondered why sending 15% less tonnage is more expensive?
Well, it's...
Second page of your recommendation.
It's oftentimes, there's a, the whole purpose behind the Gross Points Clinton Refuse Disposal Authority that was by pooling the business of those multiple communities, just like collaboration in a purchasing process. You're going to have a greater mass, you're going to have more power in the marketplace, it's going to make your piece of business more attractive vis a vis a smaller piece of business, so you'd get a better price, was the whole theory behind the Gross Points Clinton Refuse Disposal Authority. And that's the theory in bringing us up here. Oftentimes, when you're dealing with a volume process like garbage collection, you're going to get a better price on a higher volume of trash.
And we will continue to pay the state fee of .36 per ton?
Yeah, that should be, that should be a carryover either way. To my knowledge, that's not included in the price that's provided. That's why I listed it separately with what we're experiencing currently.
Any other questions?
I will make my comment on this. I do not like the fact that, basically, I'm voting on this with a gun to my head, the fact that previous... Oh, yes, because if this does come back, then it's like, hey, one person's holding out, and it should have been a little bit more reasonable as far as what we were requesting as representatives of our residents as far as those bins were concerned and what the price may cost, and now one person holds out, and, I mean, on principle alone, I want to vote no, but I don't want to risk having to pay more. And the way this was packaged, I think was, was not very professional.
Well, I have to disagree with you. I think the city administration did an excellent job in doing their research on this, and I think they're bringing it forth to us, and that's their job, to do the research and bring us the best that they can find, and I think that's what we have in front of us, and they did the job, they did their job, so.
I guess I don't understand the dissension over this because we're actually going to save money by doing it, so that's a good thing.
No other questions, roll call, please. Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Manser?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, 9D, request commission approval of a contract for utility department management. Need a motion?
I move to enter into a professional services agreement for day-to-day management and oversight of the utilities department with F and V operations and resource management for one year with an option to extend as approved by the city commission and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement as finalized by the city charter.
City attorney.
City attorney. Oh, I'm sorry, city attorney, I got distracted.
Do we have a second? Support.
City administration has taken several steps to fill the vacancy in our utilities director position, which was created by the retirement of the prior incumbent. These steps have included a hiring search as well as investigation of various contractual alternatives for providing day-to-day management, oversight, and direction to our wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, and the associated collection and distribution function. City administration conducted a request for qualifications or an RFQ process for management services related to our utilities department. As a result of the RFQ, F and V operations and resource management, FVOP, was selected as our preferred respondent, and discussions with FVOP for provision of professional services were held. City administration is recommending that the city finalize a professional services agreement with FVOP for day-to-day management and oversight of our utilities department. Additional information is again attached to this agenda item by way of a memo and various other pieces of information that's provided here for the commission's review.
Questions, concerns? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Flash?
I'm sorry, this is my shorthand.
Put your other hand up.
Steve, have you had any conversation with any of the employees that either work in the water department or the sewage department to see if anyone would be interested in taking on the responsibilities of the day-to-day management of these two facilities?
We've had two employees that have one of the licenses to run...
I'm not talking about the licenses.
You know, I'm just going to use that as an entree into that conversation. Each one has a license for their area of function, but they don't have the other license that would be able to operate the overall system, as we had with Chuck Bellmore, who was a prior employee that had both licenses. Nobody has pursued any additional licenses on that front. I've never had an experience where anybody indicated any interest in how they could step up to the plate and do additional things to make themselves a candidate for that position.
Have they been asked?
I can't say that I asked them directly, no.
And how would you know?
Well, there's lots of things that could have happened if they were interested in doing that, and then nothing's happened in the year since Chuck Bellmore has left, so.
Do you think it might be a good idea to ask them?
I'll, I can ask, but I don't think the answer's going to be yes, is how I would put it.
How do you know until you ask?
I can ask. I have not.
Because I think we could probably get somebody who has experience in those two facilities, either one or the other, to step up and provide the management service that we're looking for. They don't necessarily have to have both licenses to give us the management experience that we're looking for.
What I would say about that is, in terms of the licenses, it's a bonus to have the licenses. I think you're right that we could get by without it. But it's really the management acumen, and whether you think an existing employee has the management acumen to run the full set of facilities. And you can take what you will from my asking or not asking the question, so.
I think we need to ask.
Commissioner Menzner?
Please refresh my memory. What was the salary that we posted this position at?
I can't say for sure. The prior incumbent's salary was in the mid-seventies neighborhood?
Yeah, mid-seventies.
Right, so with benefits, you're looking at about 120 in that neighborhood in terms of cost, when you factor in our cost of benefits.
So we posted that in the seventies, threw in, you know, and added in a number for benefits to make it 120. And yet, we're going to offer a contractor $204,000 a year. It would seem to me that if we had posted that position at like, you know, 150 or more in cash, you know, in cash pay, and then added the benefits in, we would get a employee who might know something about the water treatment or in the, you know, sewer systems, and get somebody that's, you know, loyal to the city, you know, that, you know, we have some control over. I really do not want to pay a management company $204,000 when I don't think that we explored hiring a well-qualified person, because you're not going to get a well-qualified person with one or two licenses, I think, at that $79,000 or $80,000.
The general feedback that I had from people in the industry is that somebody who's not attached that has those licenses doesn't exist, basically. That's why we didn't get the response last time. That's for what it's worth. And we could post a higher pay, and we might get responses, I have no idea. But typically, those people are already employed somewhere in a position oftentimes with a contract company like this, that allows them to have that capability to earn a different income. And/or a firm provides a little bit more of a wider team, instead of just one individual that has abilities beyond one individual's knowledge, skills, and abilities. They have a team of people that they can bring to bear. And there is no doubt it's an increase over the cost of what it had been previously. I don't dispute that. The costs are accurate. We did do some negotiation, get the cost down from where it was. As another way of talking about that cost and whether it's sort of the going rate, I mentioned contractual alternatives that were evaluated, and we tried to look at finding somebody who didn't have the licenses, but was somebody who was a professional, perhaps in the public services area, that had the management acumen to deal with our employees, and then would have, you know, the subordinate employees maybe have the license requirements that would allow us to function sort of in tandem that way. And when we looked at pricing on that front, for even somebody who doesn't have the specific experience in the utilities function, they have some general exposure to it, but not that specific experience. The going rate with a contractual firm, including our consulting engineers, was in the neighborhood of $85 to $95 an hour, which is the range that we're in with this company.
Commissioner Raker?
I had a little bit of a sticker shock myself in terms of the price, but it does seem to be the going rate.
I have a few comments. First, to build off Commissioner Blash's statement about seeking somebody internally that may want to pursue that, I take it further and offer whatever cost for training. I would imagine it's not as costly as this contract here, but I know you have been working on this contract for some time. We've had several conversations about this. Does this also include a capital needs assessment that we talked about?
That's covered in the proposal, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
I would strongly encourage you to pursue what Commissioner Blash and Commissioner Menzner are suggesting, and also look into the possibility of affording whatever training is needed to cover that, if it's cost-effective for us. And also, what is the shelf life of this contract? Because I don't want to necessarily vote...
One year.
No, no, no. I mean, that they'll accept us voting on it. We don't have to vote on it today. I don't want to like vote it down necessarily if your options that we're suggesting to you are not fruitful. You know what I mean?
I don't have anything. There's a period of time that the price was quoted as, you know, it's typically part of contracting process, that there's a period of time. I don't know if they would choose to exercise that, I really don't know.
Do you know what that period of time is?
I haven't seen it in any of their agreements, quite frankly. I'm just saying that, yeah, it's not in either one of the agreements currently, so I don't know if they, you know, that's just, it's kind of up to their discretion if they're going to continue to hold that price. And it was a reduction in price, I want to reiterate. It's cut by about $1,000 per month or $12,000 per year from initial proposal, as well as reducing some administrative expenses by a percentage as well. So we did get some headway on the costs, but I really can't answer it directly, I really don't know.
I would suggest that we consider postponing this so that you can have those conversations and that we just don't torpedo this thing right off the bat.
On the other hand, looking at the things that they, that the company says they're going to do, I think that might be very hard for somebody who has been an employee in the water department to do, which was evaluate what everybody's doing, you know, get a handle on changes that might need to be made, streamline policies, things like that. I think sometimes somebody from the outside might be a little more objective about things like that. Plus, we talked about how it was necessary to get somebody in managing this as soon as possible, and if we delay it, it's going to be longer that we don't have any real oversight of that department.
And the one-year term is, you know, it's basically up to one year, but nothing beyond that. So I mean, we have a period of time to take a look at them and see if, you know, there's out functions of any contract that would be in play if we decided we wanted to go a different route. So we would have that opportunity. This way, we'd get somebody in that would have management oversight more quickly and allow us to evaluate that personal aspect. And I consider evaluation, evaluating that personal aspect in a different fashion in the future, but this provides us somebody that has professional experience, skills, and abilities on a pretty much right-now basis. They're ready to start work inside of 30 days. So then we can take a look if we wanted to a bid process or a job posting process in the future.
Did you have another question?
I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, over the last 35 years that I've been associated with this municipality, we have, we've had fairly good success at promoting from within. We've had people that have really stepped up and have done a good job for us. I'm looking at one sitting over there in a jury box today, if you want to point to an example. And I, I really think that we need to talk to the employees that we currently have in those two facilities and see if there's somebody that's willing to do that. And if, and as Commissioner Raker stated, that if they're missing one license, I think it would be cheaper for us to pay for that person to get that license to fill that requirement.
I have a question. Can we, is there a 30-day notice to get out of this, or anything that if we decide to go with this group and, you know, have them start and start doing some of the evaluations that you're talking about? In the meantime, you pursue talking to the employees and kind of evaluating and see if there's any interest there, and setting that up along with the training. Can we get out of this contract if we're into it like three months? Can we get out?
Their original proposal, which was extensively revised, did have a provision for a 30-day termination. So they're even willing to go with a 30-day termination.
Commissioner Menzner?
I just wanted to say that I did talk to some of the employees from the water department, and I asked them what they wanted, and they all, all of them told me that they wanted to go to the county, that they did not want a management company coming in.
Well, just as a clarification on that, they might not understand the context of how a management company was going to come in. There's two, there's different ways that that can come about, and one of which is where they would transition to becoming employees of the subcontractor. The city would basically lease ownership of the facilities for a period of time to that, to that subcontractor. And I didn't think that this community was interested in that step or ready for that step. So this is basically this company stepping in and acting as a department head management representative of the city only. The city employees would stay city employees. The city assets would stay city assets. And I think that perhaps what their concern was on that would be different than what we're executing here. I can't say for sure, but I know that typically they have an understanding of what's going to happen with that, and it's different than what we're executing if we approve the action today. It's strictly as a management oversight. We retain ownership of the assets as well as the employees under this contractual relationship, which is different than they might be expecting.
Commissioner Blash?
Going along with what Commissioner Raker said, if we, if we vote this down tonight, does that kill the deal? And if it, if it does, would we be better off to table this until the city manager has an opportunity to query the employees to see whether or not there's anyone that would have interest in it?
If you're asking me for that hypothetical, I would much prefer a tabling as opposed to a rejection.
That's, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And that way, we give you some time, and then we can, we can, and if there isn't any interest, then we can, this can be brought back up again, and then we can decide which route we want to go.
But can I just say that it has to be done right away? It can't be something that can be put off a couple months?
No, no. And I'm not advocating...
Because we have not had oversight in almost a year, and thank God, everything is fine, but I think that's just such a crucial area to not have management oversight.
I don't disagree.
And so it's not something I think that we can put aside for a month or two. I think the city management has to get on it tomorrow.
My intent would be to bring it back, April 6th meeting, with an answer as to whether there was employee interest or not. If there was, that means one thing. If there wasn't, it means another.
Commissioner Menzner?
Then I would make that motion, that we table this until the April 6th meeting.
I think you have a motion.
A motion on the table, whoever made it can rescind it.
Need to rescind.
Who made the, who made the motion?
Menzner?
I rescind.
Okay, who seconded?
Blash.
I'll rescind.
Okay.
Now, go ahead.
Then now I have an alternative motion. I would like to table this until the April 6th meeting.
16th.
16th.
April 6th.
Six.
Which, ahead of time, I will not be present for the meeting, but that's fine. We can get it on the agenda for them. I wouldn't want to wait any longer.
I think you should be here, so I think we should go the 16th.
The 20th.
Don't you think, or the 20th?
I'd like to have the city manager as well.
Because I think there'd be questions that we might have.
Sure, either way, it's fine.
I'd like to support her motion with the following amendment, that the training option be investigated, and if cost-effective, afforded to our employees. Will you accept my friendly amendment?
Yes.
There we go, that's the motion.
And one more, I'm sorry, well, I'll clarify it next time, thank you. It's not going to change anything.
Roll call.
Blash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Okay, nine E, approval purchase and payments of invoices.
I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Second.
Questions? Commissioner Menzner?
I just had a question on J.C. Landscaping and Sprinkler System. It has the thing, the figure of $36 per hour additional items. What does that cover? I'm confused by that.
That's if there's excess behind just a single cutting of the property. If there's a double or triple cut, that doesn't occur very often. Or if there are additional bulk items, like branches or sticks that are on the property.
Commissioner Raker?
Also, I know that we went with J.C. because we went with a lower bidder in the years past, and that that person couldn't, or that company couldn't perform. Did we at least call this lower bidder and see what their capacity was? Not that I don't want to give J.C. the contract, but it's substantially different.
Yeah, the low, the lowest bidder in this case didn't provide the monitoring and oversight that we, that J.C. does after properties are cut once and are placed on a cut list. J.C. will go out and monitor those properties, which helps our staff.
Fantastic.
Roll call.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Blash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, let me find my notes here. Okay. Nine F is 10A, appointments of boards of commissions and committees.
I will move to approve the appointments as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Raker?
Yes. I am going to publicly support these individuals that have sought the reappointment, but I'm going to point out to my colleagues that we do have a commissioner here who did not get a chance to vet these people when they were initially appointed, which is a continued flaw in the process. That's my drum, I'm beating it. Not enough people here yet, but those are my comments on that.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Menzner?
I just wanted to say that I appreciated seeing Mr. Pettiprind's application. So I don't know who, you know, never met him, didn't know who he was. I think that helps in the process.
On that point, the unfortunate thing is, you didn't get to see any of the reappointments, and because of your tenure, you have never seen them. So it is anticipated that you will just rubber stamp this.
No, it would not be that rubber stamping, because Commissioner Menzner does her homework. She does, she called the water waste people to talk to them, and if she wanted to know about any of these, the applications are in file with the city clerk's office. So they are available.
Roll call.
Hill?
Yes.
Menzner?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Blash?
Yep.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Okay, now we have, hold on. 10C, no, 9G is 10C. And that is the request to approve the 2015 Downtown Development Authority calendar of events. Need a motion.
Motion to approve the 2015 calendar of events as presented by the Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority.
The Mount Clemens DDA is requesting authorization of the proposed 2015 calendar of events. The scheduling of events includes events wholly produced and promoted by the Mount Clemens DDA, and those events produced in partnership with other organizations. I'm sorry, did I jump the gun and not get a move on support? I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There was no sign.
Sorry. I didn't catch that, sorry. Sorry. My apologies. I jumped the gun. This request is to authorize the temporary closing of required city streets as described in the attached document. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Menzner?
You know, I just have a concern, and I see Mickey here. Out of all of these events, there's only one that's taking place on the Clinton, you know, in the Clinton River Park on our waterfront. We included the, you know, that waterfront into the DDA so that, in my opinion, so that things could happen down there. And I'm looking at all these things at the, you know, Fountain Stage and the McComb Place, and that involves closure of the streets, and it involves DPW work, and I think it causes traffic safety issues. So I'm just, I need to hear something about why we're not doing this stuff, these concerts at the park.
That's not our side of the river, first of all. We only have the west side of the river.
Right. Mickey, come to the mic, okay, please? Thank you. not an expense there.
Okay. That's all I needed.
Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
And thank you for working on that calendar of events. I know it was difficult to get it together.
Move to the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Bunton? Oh, sorry. He's not here. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
Bunton? Oh, sorry. He's not here. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Okay. City managers report.
Few items this evening. Number one, master plan update status. The city did receive five responses to our request for proposal process for the master plan update.
On this point, I need to interject a housekeeping issue. We did not motion to excuse Commissioner Bunton, so that is my motion at this time.
Roll call, please.
Just a second. It's going to confuse you. Yes. We're really kidding.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Mansur?
Yes.
Raker?
Yes.
Flash?
Yes.
All right. You can continue.
She passed the test. That was good. The city received five responses to our RFP process. The previously established election committee will soon review the individual proposals on their own, and then meet together as a committee to formally review the proposals, and we'll keep you posted on the processes as they continue. Secondly, the county construction project update. The city continues to actively participate with the county on their work involving the city of Mount Clemens campus facilities. Brian Tingley and staff remain committed to working proactively and cooperatively with county staff and representatives to ensure a successful project outcome for the county and the city. The first official action to be completed was the planning commission's approval of the county administration building parking structure that has taken place. Number three, curbside residential compost pickup. This service will begin again on March 30th, 2015, with service continuing through December 4th, 2015. We have sent press releases to local newspapers, and also, this information has been added to the city cable television and the website. So, again, residential compost pickup will begin on March 30th again.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll go to Commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Campbell.
I have a couple of things here tonight. The gentleman that came regarding the newspapers, that was on my agenda tonight because I walked between Cass Avenue and Church Street, and on my block, there were 27 newspapers laying in the street. And I had talked to the city manager about that today. I said, I know we've visited this issue before. It is the freedom of the First Amendment, press, speech, et cetera. But there is a difference between freedom of speech and littering, and that is exactly what it is. Throwing a newspaper out a window is not free speech. I got home from my walk on Sunday morning, and there was my newspaper laying in the street because my car, they couldn't get close enough to the curb. So, we need to tell whoever this newspaper is that if they want to deliver a paper, they can put it on the door, but they can't throw it out the window anymore. I was on fair and place, and there were nine newspapers outside the sidewalk and curb of one house. That's not free speech, that's littering. So, that needs to be addressed by the next meeting. Couple other things. I had several residents calling up regarding issues of furniture being out. The resident was here regarding the burned-out house. So, I was with the city manager today. We went over and looked at these, and he asked, there was the chair sitting on the street put out on Sunday for a Wednesday pickup. What happens to these people? Do they just allow to continue to put their trash out like this? Because on the back street of Aaron's, they had put out a couch the previous day, and something got into it, and the stuffing was blowing all down the street. So, one of the residents swept it up. The bag was still there, we saw that today, and then they proceeded to put out a chair and another chaise lounger. There were many other issues regarding that. I've talked with every commissioner here. The mayor and the city manager will be talking about strategic planning, and I said, this is where we need to be addressing these most basic issues of which people see every day and which people see when they're driving through as prospective home buyers. If they see this, they're not going to want to buy here. So, those are the things that we need to address right away, and I think that as strategic planning will be a perfect time to talk about these. With that, have a great evening.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I wanted to thank Mr. Brown for updating us about the water meter installation. I think that information was very helpful. Last Friday, March 13th, I was pleased to participate as a judge in the Mount Clemens Optimist Club's oratorical contest. The participants were all Mount Clemens middle school and high school students. The contest was held at Mount Clemens High School in the large auditorium, with middle school and high school students attending. The speakers were eight girls and four boys who spoke on the topic, how my optimism will help me press on to greater achievements in the future. I was very impressed with the quality of their presentations and the behavior of the students who listened. The winners, one girl and one boy, received cash prizes and will go on to compete on the next level. I think the Mount Clemens community can be proud of our students. Next Monday, the city commission is scheduled to begin our strategic planning process. I'm hoping this process will have positive results for our city. I am going to imitate Commissioner Bunton and share a quote. Since he's not here tonight, I'm taking his place, I guess. I'm presenting this as food for thought. "You never change things by fighting the existing reality. To change something, build a new model that makes the existing model obsolete." This is a quote from Buckminster Fuller, designer, author, and inventor. Thank you. I hope everyone has a good evening and a great week.
You need a redo?
No, I just have one to add on. I want to congratulate Deputy Clerk Martin on her great job today.
Thank you. Commissioner Raker?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Greg Murray for your advocacy and your initiative on this proposal to bring more services to our underserved youngsters here in Mount Clemens. You've done a lot of groundwork already, and I hope that we can see this through to fruition. You have my full support. It does sound like the, the commission is leaning towards a positive endorsement as well. I also want to thank Commissioner Mansur. I believe you provided some information to some of the Kendrick area Neighborhood Watch residents that were, that was of concern and shared at the meeting. I also want to thank you for your attendance. It's no big deal that I go there because I reside in Kendrick area Neighborhood Watch, but when another city commissioner shows up, it's greatly appreciated. It's unfortunate that Mr. Tom Addis of 1330 Kingsley is going to be departing. Unfortunately, over the course of my four years of representing and campaigning, I have either heard or witnessed this far too often for various reasons. And to segue off of Commissioner Campbell's observations, if we can get the administration to comment with some statistics as far as, I don't necessarily want people to get a, a sidewalk enforcement violation for the snow removal, but I want to kind of drive home the fact that we have some things on the books, and I'd like to know whether or not they're being enforced and to what degree. Because that contributes to the poor state of many of our sidewalks throughout town. And that, that about sums it up. Thank you.
Commissioner Mansur?
Just a few community notes here. There's a Red Cross Blood Drive Monday, the 30th, from 1:00 to 6:45 at the Mount Clemens YMCA on, at 10 North River Road. You can go on their website, redcrossblood.org, or call 1-800-733-2767. The McComb County Health Department is conducting free vision and hearing screenings for incoming kindergarteners from March through May for an appointment. And to get the locations, call 586-412-5945. The Clinton River Watershed Council is conducting training for the Adopt a Stream program. Volunteers will monitor and help protect our local streams and rivers. We got a nice one right out here. I see a lot of people fishing down at the park down here. So, necessary equipment is supplied by the Rivershed Council. Data is collected in May and October. Trainings will be conducted in March 31st, April 18th, May 14th. You can call them at 248-601-0606, or email them at registration@crwc.org. I'd like to commend our fire department for raising $1,306 in pledges for the American Lung Association by participating in the annual Fight for Air fundraisers. That fundraiser requires them to climb 70 floors in full gear of the Renaissance Center, and several of our firefighters did that successfully. And I toured the neighborhood after talking to Commissioner Campbell, and I was disappointed and dismayed at the lack of care of some of these homes and the willingness of residents to throw their trash out their door onto the lawn, to let the, let trash sit in the sidewalk, you know, on the sidewalks, in the roads, on their driveways, in their lawns. I was very disappointed in that. Thank you.
Commissioner Flash?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Murray for being here this evening. I think, I think the endeavor that you're about to pursue is just, is well worth all the effort that you're going to put into it. To the city manager, I got a call from one of the residents over on Roslyn. The snow issue obviously is not an issue anymore, but...
It could be again.
It could be.
It could be, but I don't know if it, to the, to that extent, it could be. But the, the thing that, the call that I got was with regards to the, the roof-mounted air exchangers on the hospital and the noise that they're making. I know he's had this problem in the past, apparently. You can't hear it if you're at the hospital. You can hear it if you're in the, just on the other side of that, that brick wall that's there. The sound kind of travels away from the campus and into the backyards. And the first time that they resolved it, it had a bad bearing, and they couldn't hear it at the, at the hospital. So...
Check and do it.
See if, what you can do with that. The Edison meter, I confused that, because I was told that Edison is sending out notices to the individuals that they are going to change their meter. I don't remember receiving one, but that's not my complaint. My complaint is, when they changed the meter, no one was home. And when they reattached the new meter and put the electrical current back in my house, it set off my alarm system. And so, you know, if they're going to send us a letter, let us know what day you're going to be there, particularly maybe what time you might be there, in the morning or in the afternoon, so that somebody can be present. And those are my comments.
Okay. I have one announcement here from the Mount Clemens Lions Club. Lawrence F. Schott Jr. Memorial Scholarship Award. They wanted me to announce this, that applications are going to be available for this award.